Good morning. Good, how are you? Um, we have a few of that was sold off. See if we can catch this here.
Welcome, Richard. Welcome, Richard. I'm looking forward to it. 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 I'm looking forward to it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Movie cover.
We can't for a long day.
Um, I guess the, so your order that is pretty long, he is way off. And it's like, all the things you're not planning, they're probably going to go through. I don't know, after he was taking it from his past, he was like, no, I'm here for you. That'll be in your office, you're down here.
I'm here to add this rate soon. I'm not hoping that. Hello, how's it going everybody? No, I mean, I'm just starting to prepare what goes ahead on something. Exertors have no control over it. But I love the filmers office, it's kind of kind of diverse. It's been a process. Well, you already had it.
I don't process.
I didn't know if they would.
I didn't know, I wouldn't have.
Yeah. They're cut down to seventy-five percent. And that's something. Real make work. Yeah. So, I might tell you guys, that's why I just wanted to know, I was adding up, again, and aside. I think Frank will stay up there. You better see. You know, that's why I gave you everything. She stayed with something, eight percent of the. Yes, I'm right, eight percent of the big three for. So, if I need to. No, I'm just doing it.
I'm not worried about right now.
Yep. Just, I don't know what I can do. Yeah, I wonder.
So, I'm used, I'm used to one of them, I look at my client, and I was like, no, that's wrong. So, then I'm good. And then mine was like, hey, that's right. Ask them, he says, I'm just telling you, no. So, now, when you guys find this.
I thought it was on the bench, so I could. I'm gonna get that. Okay. Are you looking on that?
I'll find it.
Yeah, I bet you. Richard is looking for paperwork. He will be in.
Have you heard from, uh, Keith, um, unless you're gonna, you know, see if he remembers, but he's on the.
Welcome, Richard.
Gentlemen, good morning.
How are you, Richard?
I'm fine.
Just to, uh, make you aware, we have a private citizen that is recording this meeting and likely be on the internet.
I understand.
To make you aware.
I understand.
We're ready for you.
Okay. Uh, I don't have really a whole lot to report yet this week, whatever. Um, you guys have seen the water he got there, out in the street, or Tim has anyway.
Yeah.
The city is aware of that, so I don't know.
Very good.
They seem to think that the water might come nearby the street, so they don't know where it's coming from. Um, I haven't heard back yet from, um, Jeff Kohler, only he's come up with for the gray cross. Um, don't think, he, he's not gonna mess around with it, he'll find something, he'll get that on. Our grass is growing out there.
Yes, yeah.
So, this morning.
Yeah.
So.
Perfect spring for planting grass.
Yes, yeah. The communications equipment, the stuff we were waiting on for, uh, vendor communication, did all arrive. It looks like we did weeks before. It's all up there in an S A S. The alarm is on, and apparently it's, there can always define out there. Rather than like you say, for some people, it's north annex.
But everything that, everything that was on the package is left, okay, you saw.
Everything that's taken off was there, yes.
Perfect.
Yeah, uh, I was really kind of surprised because the way she talked originally, that, you know, this was gonna be a big load of stuff, and this was gonna be a gigantic load, the real spools are gonna be so big and stuff like that. This is it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, oh. Dutch coal, as far as pouring goes, and it's L B T insulation glue down with coat base, um, tear out the old stuff all the way and look throughout the floor. It is eight, or thirteen thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars twenty cents. Which I didn't think that was very bad at all, considering what he's gonna have to do. Uh, you can imagine some of that's gonna be kind of difficult for a while. And, you know, and before, again, like I said, I've already had a piece of a test, so we don't have to ask us free, we don't have to worry about that.
Yeah.
Yes, but with that, the two drywall companies I have up, which are both talking about, um, there'll just be a layover, which will say that the family will stay there. One's calling for a quarter inch, and one calling for a half inch. And they will both install the drywall up to where the ceiling is now, and finish off the drywall so that it's stable. So, all we have to do is go back in there. Now, Drywall Medics was going with a quarter inch. And I know Drywall Medics is expensive. They came back with a total eighteen thousand eight hundred fifty dollars.
And that's layover also. So, and, and neither one of them are taking down the, the ceiling and extending the drywall above the ceiling. They're gonna butt it up against the ceiling.
Correct.
It's on track.
Correct. Pioneer, now, I don't even know, before you, you, you go crazy on that one. Pioneer, of course, we talked about it too, if he's under testing, he, he recommends putting up half inch. And he put something up there at the top of the ceiling to make it look like it's supposed to be there with, with the drops in it. I don't see how I can do it. His price was fifty-one hundred dollars.
Is, with the, uh, additional thickness, how's that gonna affect all your doorways?
Yeah, I mean, either way, we're gonna have to do something. Uh, well, basically, both a quarter inch or half inch.
Yeah, I understand that, but, you know, your, your door frame right now is a certain width, and then you go add a quarter or half an inch more, how are you gonna extend that door frame?
I guess.
Treat that.
Eventually, I'd like, eventually, I'd like to see maybe along that project too, I don't know, is change some of the doors. Because a lot of them are not, they're not secure for nothing, I mean, my door is not, the storage beside me is not, the conference room is not, some of the storage in doors, you could walk to them if you needed, you know, um.
Well, if, if you're gonna change the, the wall finish, that's the time to change it.
And that's not changing, because you can get the jam that thickness, you know, you can get a dent in the jam and do that. If we kept them the same way, you know, there's always ways that you can blow them out, we blow them out after, in fact, when we put them in there. Just, you know, put a little strip in there and finish it off like you wouldn't even know that it's shared, but it, it can be done, no problem, but. So, just thinking, I mean, I know you're still wanting to do, still wanting to do ceilings that are having done, you ask that, but I know there's gonna be another couple thousand dollars just to replace the tiles. And as the tiles are done, I kinda wanna have somebody, you know, there's nothing wrong with the grid work, but if you just put paint, put your paint out, you know, as we do it. Um, I mean, even there, you're looking at. Even there, with Kramer's and Pioneer's combined, is eighteen thousand nine hundred seventy-three point twenty. And, I mean, another couple thousand, you're looking at less than twenty-five thousand dollars for probably redoing that thing, but, and that's making it completely, basically completely new again.
No.
That's knocking out the doors.
I take it from the, from the entrance doors all the way back to the main room.
They'll take it all the way around and up the stairway. Anywhere there's a piece of drywall, I mean, piece of wood paneling.
Okay.
They'll take care of that.
And up the stairway too.
They'll come up, they'll come down, around where the vending machine used to be.
Yeah.
And then up the stairway toward finished off, so. So, I mean, it's up to you guys whether you wanna do that or not, but I just got you, got you some information as to.
Do you, do you recall, Richard, how long it's been since, since we've had this particular way? How many years we've had it?
Then you're be funny.
Yeah.
Again, I'm gonna say it's been since it was done first time, which, I always wanted to say, I always thought it was in the sixties, but I think it was more in the eighties. When, when baseball was remodeling.
So, probably conservative, you're saying, forty years.
Yeah. Maybe, yeah.
I found some pictures of an event that was held in the basement of the courthouse, where there were no walls in the basement. There was a cage in the one end that had equipment, secure, but the basement was wide open. And there was a, uh, youth banquet down there. And that was in the fifties.
In the fifties.
And so.
That's up these days, I thought, oh, oh, I'll, I'll take it back later, you can, a couple weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, find out what the doors would add to.
Yeah.
Okay.
While you're doing your possible chores.
We gotta make the mess, but.
Make the one, make the one mess.
In affair with the election, or whatever.
Well, that doesn't know.
Well, mess up them and their schedule.
It will be a little bit tough, you know, quite honestly, you know, if we do do that, and we come to the floor, that is, you know, might be some limitations. When it comes to him doing the border part, you know, tearing it up, and having to look, fix the floor twice, and glue down stuff like that. It might create some coming and going issues, but that can be all worked around or whatever. Like you said, he was worried about, about prosecutors, and I said, ah, they got a second door they can go in. They got a back door they can go in now, but.
Okay.
Okay.
Good, good.
Now for you, Richard.
Okay.
Uh, we have approved museum using, um, the Arco building for some temporary storage. Uh, some museum items will be for about six months. So, I've got a hold of you when they're ready to move those items in.
Okay.
We'll coordinate moving that in. It's, it's temporary, so you don't have to worry about any current shelving and all that, I know you already got a lot of shelving here anyway.
Yeah.
And speaking of shelving, we approved the auditor to use the empty room, the north annex, for records.
That's something I didn't think, I didn't know, there's two, like, little empty, are we talking the other half of the room that I built?
Oh, I thought both sides of that were full.
No, just one side.
Are you, do you know how many records the auditor has?
I do not. I've been wanting to actually get with him, and actually brag him up there and say, okay, I have these two locations. There's, other than, other than the big room, we have the half of the other big room. And we have that, that room that was in between the two front big rooms.
Yeah. That's on, that's now only accessible by the big empty room, right?
By the front, yes, because the other room has shelves and everything in front of the door, so that it can be accessed.
Yeah.
So. So, I, I mean, I don't think he's got a lot, but he did mention something about books upstairs in the attic, and he wants to take there also, so.
Well, if you can, if you can get with him, and if it, if it will fit in that other half of that room, then we'll use that.
I think we can do that, so. I think we can do that, so.
Very good.
All right.
Okay.
I think I'm good.
Anything on the, I know, I just had told you about it, but the lane out by the school.
No, I was gonna stop out there yesterday and I didn't, but I'll get out there.
Just remind you.
We are down a person, we are down a person this week, so.
Yeah.
I don't think they use it other than for the fair, so.
You still gonna put your cahoots out there?
But that doesn't involve us. All right, I don't think I've got anything else once you guys have anything more.
Good, that's good.
All right.
Yeah, Richard.
Yeah.
Grass looks nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Five salmon.
You didn't say what I did to that, you didn't say that when I did it, we'd be so good.
You know, I'm wondering if, if Randy Rogers went out with his tape measure. That grass is proper length.
You're gonna get out there too early to the dandelion. Probably have a project, you're gonna talk about dandelions out there.
You can't keep up with dandelions.
Johnny was worried, because they had come do their, uh, tree beginneth, and the dandelions were coming, I said, don't worry, I said, they'll take care of it, I said, they're gonna be here tomorrow. I said, they'll take care of it, and sure, turned up, they came, and a little bit of dandelion you add, disappeared.
Just ran away now.
Yeah, so.
All right.
Y'all wanna have a good day?
You have to have it too.
Thank you.
Andy, Richard.
But, uh, I feel. Did you see where the state is set us?
I suppose it's so.
Putting Route thirty, internet. Thing across the state, that's gonna follow Route thirty? Did you read any of that? They're gonna drop line into Arden County to the courthouse, the license.
Bureau.
And the engineer office, I think it was, and then Ohio Northern University. And it's supposed to be the big upgrade for, I'm guessing, intel use someday, or internet broadband, but it's like a major corridor across the state of Ohio, Route thirty.
I think I forwarded you guys that map, right? They got, they sent that about?
Yes, I, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I just didn't know if it, but it looks like it follows Route thirty, I mean, close to physically Route thirty, so it may not actually be the major cable, or the major, whatever it takes to do this, in the hardened account, but they're going to drop lines to hard.
There you go, it looks like it.
But.
Can I? You know, we've got, done all of this internet upgrade, and, and, uh, we've got all of this, oh, no, Keith, you're clear up here.
I was trying. No, you can.
And. Morning, Keith, good.
Good morning, Keith.
How are you?
How are you? I'm doing well.
Just to make you aware, we have a citizen here this morning who is recording the meeting, and it may be, uh, uploaded to the internet, so you're aware. I think we're ready when you're ready.
All right, well, that's a, uh, brief updates, what's happening, so, um, L E P C drill, uh, we completed, that one, well, Tim was there. Um, and we had a couple of marches against us, but otherwise, uh, we passed, um, so we're good to move on to the next, uh, full-size scale drill that'll happen here within the next, uh, two years probably, um, so we, we are prepared for that, we'll get some of the fixes done that need to be done. Now, they were very small fixes, basically based on equipment, um, stuff that wasn't being used, um, during that time. But once again, it was a functional drill, and sometimes it's hard for people to get that mindset to be able to hook up to do things the way they would normally do them, right? With their computers and stuff like that, um, so that went well, that is down at CERT, that'll be voted on, I believe, this Thursday, should be the CERT meeting, um, and that'll be, should be voted through and completed and done. Um, the EMPG.
Keith, in all honesty, congratulations, it sounds like we draw at the.
Thank you. You know, we had our, we had our bumps, that, that we had, uh, that happened during the drill, but otherwise, it was not, I kind of expected to happen during that for the first time that the E O C's really been run for a while. Um, eh, the people that were in there were all pretty much their first time, but they'd been in the E O C, and they handled it well, um, based on the way we had it set up, we could probably make a few changes on that, the way it was designed in the room. Um, but Tim got to sit in there and kind of witness, because he got stuck back by himself at the executive table.
Got to watch.
Kind of understand how, how things roll and, and happen during that time, um, with the conferences and the briefings and stuff that happened. Um, so it, it went pretty good, so.
Yeah, I would be, I was very impressed by your performance and the others in the E O C, I mean, that was excellent. I've been in them before as a role of a O A C on the scene, so I got to see the other side before, and now I get to see the inside of it. And very impressed, uh, you handled it well, you always have, uh, bumps in the road, but they're all handled. The room, like you said, wasn't set up maybe just for that, which always, you know, puts a roadblock in there where they used to have it years ago, put it down the hall, it was mainly computers around the tables, and it was all set up just for that, so I think we adapted well, or you did. So, I would commend you for the operation, but everybody else that helped there, that was impressive, I think everybody worked well.
Saved the quarter day very well, so happy for them.
Congratulations.
So, thank you. Um, in reference to the EMPG grant, I did go back and I had a lot of individual conferences with the auditor for the state for the grants. Um, I did some, uh, pleading and asking and wanting, and I was able to secure the, um, eight thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars that we would've lost during that time, um, that there was nobody in the position, uh, so that check is in the process now of being cut, they let us go back and backdate some of the stuff that we had and use it on that old money to close out that old grant. So that money was not lost to the county, and it is coming through. Um, and that deal, it takes like twelve days to do, I got the notice of it, um, less than a week ago, so it should be transferring over, um, so that worked out well for us, and, and to my quathering them. So that's one thing that's good for, like, the county itself on the, on the grant process, and then that will put us up into the next, uh, year of the grants, um, and that'll start backdating back to January on the, the payroll stuff and everything from that date, so, no loss of money. Um, the E M P, uh, EMP grant, uh, they are out doing the agricultural, uh, commodity study now. Um, they are at certain intersections, they're about three days a week, um, but they're counting every vehicle that goes by with any type of chemical or hazmat uh, stuff on it, and any farm machinery or anything, just going through those intersections. Um, I did, uh, make the sheriff's department and all the law departments in the county aware of it, because there could be suspicious vehicles that they were just setting there, and they see somebody's counting or setting, and somebody's parking lot just watching vehicles. Um, so they are aware of it, but it is being done, they estimated it'd probably take about a month and a half for them to complete that, um, study on the counts. I, I kinda wish they would've started maybe a month sooner on it, um, when the farm machinery really started moving a lot through the county a little bit more. Um, however, you know, they got started as soon as they could, uh, so, well, we should do some preliminary numbers on that starting here soon. I, one of the gentlemen I used to work with years ago is one of the ones doing the study, maybe he's already contacted me three or four times in reference to different intersections throughout the county and stuff, so, um, that is being done, being completed, so that should start closing out part of that phase on that EMP grant as well. Um, the E O P, uh, that has been pretty much completed for what we, um, contracted out for. You know, we contracted out the three sections of that to be done, um, and they have completed all three sections, they are out for review at the current time with, uh, law enforcement, fire, and medical, um, looking at, uh, their aspects, see if anything changes, they want to put into that, actors been rewritten. Uh, so that has been up to date, and I did submit for those payments to go out, um, to resource studies, uh, make sure they have paid for their work that they done on those three sections. Um, also with the, uh, in reference to the course of training, um, we did set the date on that, which is gonna be on, uh, eight fourteen. That's gonna be at nine AM, we're here at legislature hall. Um, they will come in, uh, it's supposed to be about, um, four hours, but they don't anticipate it being four hours long, yeah. So they will be here currently that day at nine AM to start that training, um, and I do not remember off the top of my head what the exact course of training was gonna be for that day. They had talked about cyber stuff, but I, I think they, they've changed something new to do with the election process.
Our, our calendar says human resources training.
Yes, that's the course of human resource training, actually, and I believe it's gonna be in something in reference to, uh, handling employees during a political, um, election year.
Oh, okay.
I think it's gonna be a fine, fine topic.
That's what was chosen, yeah.
Okay. Um, also on the reportables for, since March, we've had two spills that were reportable spills. Of course, we had the twenty-five gallons of hydraulic fluid that was, uh, spilled at Ridgeway, um, that had been cleaned up, airified again the other day, and it's like the gentleman has grass coming into the yard near him, which is really nice, so they did a nice job of cleaning up, um, protein insects, uh, on the other side of it. Then we also had on May sixteen, thirty-five gallons of hydrochloric acid, um, that was spilled in Forest, um, that was all contained within the business itself. And then we were able to flush it back through their systems, um, hydrate it down, dilute it, and put it back through the system again. So that was one thing that was good about it, it did stay within the business itself and did not get to the outsider into the water, air, or water race at all. Uh, then I had a couple of questions, um, to pose, uh, in reference to the credit card, I'm not sure, I have a couple of things that I need to purchase because the county has to do some type of a, they're not, they don't, they have to do it, it's not something that we have a question of doing. We have to have some type of a accountability for the E O C, some type of identification factors when people come into the E O C. Um, we do have a machinery to be able to do it, but I need to purchase the cards in, I need to purchase new ribbons for it, however, the company that I need to get them from is not a P O company. So I didn't know if the cross-credit card can be used for that process, or how we go about doing it.
I would say as long as I give it to you, as you can set up a tax exempt.
Yes, there is a spot in it for the tax exempt.
And they take, they take credit card that's in your, within your, uh, credit limit.
Okay, yeah, it wasn't remiss to let me know, you're wrong.
Let them know here in the office how much it's gonna be and who it's gonna be for, so we can get a paper done here.
Okay, okay, perfect, I'll look into that and see if we can go any further within those order and get that process started. Um, Tim, I think you were slightly familiar when we talked about it briefly, in reference to those, uh, identification guards, which is something when you come in, or you'll have it assigned to you, uh, and when you, when you walk in, or all three of you walk in, you will have a badge that you have to show at the E O C, or they're, you're not getting it right. Um, it's as simple as that, they have a list of people, they know if we come in, if we can't come in, and then they'll re-quote from that point. Um, so we've got to get that set up through the county. Um, we did do one CAP meeting in the county that was with GAREZ. The CAP meetings are something that the individual tier-two businesses that we call them, they have certain amounts of chemicals. Uh, they have to do a meeting once a year, inviting public and inviting officials into those, uh, meetings as well. Um, they did a very good job, um, with us in the, in the facility, sheriff's department was there, we saw, um, and a lot of other, uh, surrounding businesses were there that day, um, just to see what's going on, you know, you know, how are you doing, what are you doing? Um, not really showing the trade secrets of anything's going on, just kinda walks them, walks people around, let them see, you know, what's going on here, you know, why we're a safe place and what's going on. Uh, so they had their CAP meeting, it went well, um, very, um, impressed with the, the safety system that they do have in place there, um, especially with their public knowledge, um, is in a warning the public, um, they do have a, uh, train whistle that they blow, sets the public around them, you know, this is one whistle, you know, stay inside, two whistles evacuate, um, which was kind of nice to know, um, and then we'll hit that further, the words you made, and sign later on, and I start pushing out more information to the public, um, on educational standards of, of what's happening in those areas. Um, so, with that, I think the only other thing that I wanted to bring up again is I think it's fine that we really, really should start looking at, uh, incorporating the L E P C, I'm gonna do that. Um, for some reason, we, we did go through the drill, um, there's a lot of questions that, that stem back to, um, not having the involvement, not having the finger on the pulse, uh, of what's going on, especially when I'm the one that's responding to the emergencies in the area with the spills and everything else, um, I'm also the one that's handling the grant that goes, you know, through the, the EMP for the L E P C. And I, I think it's really something that we, we need to really address, um, in, in trying to get that incorporated under the E M A. That can do it run smoother, um, when we get more and more of the businesses involved, and that's the whole key of the L E P C is bringing in those factories, those tier-two's, having them setting at the table, um, and, and right now, that's just not being done, that I'm being seen, that I'm seeing in the county, um, getting the invites for the meetings, um, to get them there to say, hey, you know, you are an active part of this community, and we really want to h- help each other, um, as we're going through the process for all the chemicals and stuff, because just because you have all the safety stuff there, how can this other company be able to coordinate and assist in a way with the public, you know, if there is an incident going on there? And I really wanna see that coordination start to happen a little bit more, um, than what it really has been, um, from the few months that I've been here and watching what's going on. Um, so I think it's something that we do need to consider working at, um, and, and what the, the end product would be.
Do you know offhand, I, I know you're kinda new to this county, for, for the last couple of months, but who, how many counties around us are set up that way?
So, pretty much all of them, there's only, um, four counties left in Ohio that it's completely de-ivited.
And I know this is a counter-ball, a question, you know, but, um, how would you see the organizational structure of both entities changing with this?
You know, I, I really don't see much of a whole organizational standard changing, um, A would still be coordination of the, the L E P C as doing the coordinator's, um, educational role, um, as what he's doing right now, is putting all the tier-two reports into the computer, getting sure that we have them, maintaining the, the actual committee itself would still be pretty much the same, but I wonder, it needs to be bigger than what it is, we should have at least thirty, thirty people showing up to those meetings every time that we do it, um, and that's a, that's some type of person comes from every plant that we have, every large farm, farm co-op or anything like that should be involved in those meetings, um, just so they know what's going on in the county and who's doing what. Um, but I really don't see a whole lot of organizational feature change, um, besides, you know, A would be working s- more side-by-side with me. Um, and that would be the key thing, and then whoever their chair would be setting on the committee or sets up to a vote, whoever that would be.
So you see a more coordinated effort?
Exactly, yes.
How about, do you see, uh, do you have enough time to do that and maintain all the duties that you already have?
So far, I think so, um, in reference to the, the loss control part of it, I've had a few come in, but not a whole lot. Um, if that gets busier, there could be a little bit more, um, on the plate at that time, uh, and that was gonna be the, the other topic that I bring up is I'm a little confused on some of it, because I'm really doing a lot of background research, trying to figure out who I need to contact for that stuff. Um, I talked to Corso quite a bit, trying to figure out what it is, but I, like the other day, I, I didn't realize that we didn't have an occupational, um, position here in Arden County, so. So we're sending them somewhere else, and evidently we didn't have a contract, um, with, uh, Mary Rutan at that current time to where those employees went to. Um, so we need to get a contract set up with them, um, in reference to it, so it'd be nice if we really had somebody that could look at the side stuff on this, that this HR training. Because they really know what they're looking at and how they're going to be, uh, figuring out what's going on with each one of the employees in this county. Every incident's a different incident, um, and of course it happens at a different place. Um, and then it determines on, you know, if we're going to be going through, uh, said we cannot, um, on the workers' comp. Um, in reference to that, I've had a few of them that they're being challenged by employees, uh, which makes it hard for me because I really don't know the employees. To be able to know, hey, should we be paying workers' comp on this person or should we not be paying workers' comp on this? Um, so that, that's some of the, the, the walls that I'm hitting with that in reference to not having that formal training behind me for the, the loss recovery. Not that I can't learn it eventually, but it's just a lot of phone calls getting back and forth between even attorneys and what's going on, um, with certain ones. Um, and then if, I haven't been called to court yet, but I'm, I'm sure that's gonna be happening before long, so. But, you know, in reference to right now, yes, I think I can handle all the duties, um, unless it starts getting really overwhelming on the loss control side of it.
Guess what would be the next step to move towards? Putting this together or putting LEPC underneath you, so that you're requesting? Because what's the next step of something?
So, the next step is I will reach out to the counties that are surrounding us and see if they've already got bylaws and everything set up in reference to the switchovers and how that functions. Um, that way, we're not reinventing the wheel again, uh, and we'll see what's included with that, and then I will report to you on the next meeting of what I find and determine from that, from those factors.
You'll find that out, we will explore a little bit more on the HR side of it.
And then, um, in reference to the contract from Mary Rutan, I'm not sure where I need to send that to to be filled out. I don't have the signature power to sign for the contract.
No, that would, that would come to our office.
Okay.
And, and all contracts have to be reviewed by the prosecutor first.
All right, I will get that contract for you today because I take a look at, um, and it was also asking the numbers of employees that I didn't have access to or whatever. But other than that, I think those are the main things I just wanted to record out on for the past couple of months.
Been very busy.
It hasn't, um, it's been very learned of during those three months. Um, and, uh, a challenge on one hand, but, um, nothing that I didn't take in stride and, and I kind of enjoyed it.
Well, you had a couple of babies real quick, you was living so down the, uh, link down at the EOC, so, uh, uh, I'm impressed in how you handled both, so.
Yeah, it did, yes. Yeah.
I think you could, you're up to the challenge.
Yeah, I enjoy it, I enjoy it, and, uh, I definitely like what I'm doing, and I really like the county. I mean, I, I do, I, I've had a couple of responses earlier late at night that kind of opened my eyes to the county itself and, and movement. Um, I couldn't figure out what was coming at me when I was going down the road at twelve-thirty at night going to Ridgeway. It looked like immediately and then I figured out it was a buggy once I got closer to it. Um, and then the people that are out walking at that late at night, and it was Sunday night, um, it was wild. It was a little different. But otherwise, um, I, I hope I'm doing a good job in being able to, uh, make the county feel a little bit better, give her the response aspect and say for, in, in the means of trying to do.
But you still working off?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Like I said, it's, it's, it's perfect because, I mean, it, it, it makes me think, coming, and then it lets me relax going home, so it's working well.
One, one request that I would make on incidents, uh, we had always just gotten kind of a summary report right after the incident. Uh, just to let us know, you know, that you had something and, and how it was remediated and that sort of thing. That had to be real detailed, but, uh, just to let us know what's, what's going on.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, no problem. I'll be able to do that. Any good spread that you can think of that?
No.
Oh.
Thank you, Keith.
Appreciate it, thank you, I'll, the last thing I forgot was, um, oh my gosh, ready to say it? Um, they did come out and he did look at the building again, I think he did give you the report on construction stuff back there.
Red, Richard?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, Richard.
Um, he's still looking at removing those, those, these stuff that are back there, but, uh, otherwise we did do it with the fans and everything, and we've seen them, and. Well, I hear it was pretty dang unclosely what you did on it as well, so. On that, I think that's it.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank, thank you, Keith.
Yeah, I will leave the contract for you.
Okay.
Thanks, Keith.
Yeah.
Yeah, you did that, or somebody did that before you was done. Until like the rest of the season.
Yeah, you did a pretty good job down there running the EOC. Pretty much at control for everything.
He just has that air about him.
Now, there was a lot of new faces from any of them that I had ever been along before in the EOC. A lot of people have changed. Well, Dennis, he observed us. Didn't fire, was there for fire. I know it was an accident or spill and outage was the scenario. Tanker truck, end hydrants, and a car with injuries and. A lot of things coming and going, they had a reported explosion. Then they come back about an hour into the table, that was a pulse report.
Yeah.
So they had the different pieces working and. Dennis give a news report and, uh. Dan was there as a reporter. Thought he might have retired him to be the reporter, asking reporter questions. They, they all did a very good job. I was impressed.
I'm gonna pass it around, it'll be easier for everyone. Thank you. This is for the C.
Oh, it's a internet.
Okay, that would be quite a project. I'm gonna follow it around thirty. That list on the counties too, I thought it was hard, what, who's gonna be paid and.
I go courthouse, don't show her, you need your office transfer station. And I'll be you.
What?
Not the sheriff's officer.
What, what's on that list? No, no. I, how'd they come up with those? I don't know. As far as they know, they haven't talked to anybody here.
Yeah.
I mean, somebody, they got the input for blow.
Charlie, you need to do one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I see it looks like you're as popular as ever for your public hearing, Mark.
Yeah.
So.
There's not many people here.
Eleven minutes.
You would think more people would be interested in m- the money that you're bringing in, right?
Yeah.
That you're you're bring you know.
Yeah.
But now it doesn't draw them.
No, no.
It should, it should.
Only when there's a problem.
Well, there's that.
It's eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock.
We can convene this public hearing on the program year twenty four Community Development Block Grant Small City Program.
So, uh roughly about ten, twelve days ago, I conducted public hearing number one concerning the CBG home programs, the program year twenty twenty four that covered the city camp as well as Harden County. Um that public hearing number one was just a broad general review of the types of programs that are available for Harden County uh that could potentially apply for uh over the next year. Uh we are kinda locked out of some of these until we get uh maximize on the number of applications we can have in except for the one I'm about to present to you today uh for some of these programs. And we're also on certainly uh we're on odd number of years where we can make applications to versus the other state of Ohio um counties. So public county hearing number two is generally uh more project specific. We only have one application that's going in uh and I'm real quickly funding, we have approximately, which I went over this in the public hearing number one, we have approximately ninety two million expected to be allocated to the state of Ohio by HUD for CBG and home type projects. Uh the goals, uh you'd have to meet one of the three objectives, uh national objective, national objectives. Uh one is low to moderate income, has to be at least fifty one percent, a elimination slum and glide in meeting an urgency. Typically, the two that we uh qualify under is fifty one percent LMI, either done by survey or census and or elimination slum and glide is usually our demo demolition programs, uh projects that we've done throughout the county. Uh so I only have one application uh turn in under the community development program. Uh we have project name is Village Ridgeway Storm Sur collection system improvements phase two project. Uh the program name is uh will be under the critical infrastructure program where we comply for up to five hundred thousand. Uh activities under that uh program will be two. Uh one is blood and drainage facilities for four hundred seventy and activity number two is for general administration uh for thirty thousand to carry out, administer and implement the project. Uh total project budget uh is four hundred seventy thousand for grant and a hundred and forty two nine twenty three is for local match. That's coming from a zero percent interest loan uh through the Ohio Public Works Commission program. That is currently funded, the one thirty two nine twenty three. We are waiting to see if we get the rest of this funded on the four seventy through the CBG program before they'll release that uh low interest loan. So total project cost is six twelve nine twenty three. Uh this is phase two, phase one was completed last year. Uh phase one work was completed last year through the twenty twenty one. Uh construction was done in twenty twenty three through a neighborhood revitalization. So uh we knew that this would be a two-phase effort when we started down this this project. And then we'll do an assessment once this uh this is a pretty good sized tile, forty eight inches. So uh we're gonna barely have enough cover uh to go top of in some areas of the village. So uh we'll assess the issues, it had flooding down there for decades in the south end of the village and uh the phase one has helped, but it has not eliminated uh some of the flooding, uh but it's helped get it out there faster. But uh there are still flooding and poaching issues in people's yards. So uh phase one was completed last summer and phase two would be done probably in twenty twenty five, at the latest twenty twenty six calendar years. So it's qualified as survey, they had to do the door door survey in twenty twenty uh because they were not by census qualified by LMI. And when they did that, they come back at fifty five point six eight percent. Uh they did not aroul allow us to round. So if we had come back at fifty point six percent, uh we would not have qualified. So they don't allow you to round up even though it's fifty one percent most eyes, not huts. So uh it has to be fifty one percent uh to qualify. Uh applications are due June twelfth, twenty twenty four. So. That's all I've got, unless you've got questions.
Any question?
No questions.
Tell a question.
Yeah.
I need some paperwork signed.
Figured that deadline tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um some environmental review stuff we have to sign and um um anti-displacement plan, those have to sign this time for the application. So and I also have some extensions that we requested that we didn't sign. Just.
Blue.
You gotta bring them up. Blue.
I wanna go by more quickly.
Well, I know, just you get a black one in there.
Uh sign, correct your name, and tie the present. These are all for the demo private uh program.
We are ready, correct? I told Michelle that you guys are ready, whenever she is.
Yep, we're ready if you or Michelle.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we see back here, there's been a fly or something.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not.
Oh, you're not trying to get our attention.
No.
Okay.
Flagging us, right?
Alright, well thanks for having me again. Um I don't have too much, I mean actually guys, so you know, Harden Hills closed and I came to the meeting and my my kind of my agenda was always to be um you know, it's been a real transparency kind of back, right? That it's like sunshine laws, open meetings acts, um you know, you the idea, I mean, a lot of times I think as citizens, we sit back, you know, we don't get involved and then we don't follow along and we just sort of trust that things are happening the way we think that they're gonna happen unless it's in the paper or the radio or you know, things get around, right? And um generally, I'm pretty happy with that kind of scenario. 'Cause it's like I'd like to live pretty simple, pretty simple life, although I think America's important, you know, giving the idea of our American dreams, right, and government. So um so when we had that public meeting, you know, and you kind of realized that maybe we should get involved a little bit more and um so I come, you know, to find some answers and some explanations about what's uh has happened or what is um gone on. And you know, to say, you know, that you as commissioners, I realize you guys get kind of up the brunt of um the questions and the backlash and you know, maybe it's not always, you know, the bag that you guys have to hold, you know, I mean, it's just what you gotta do. And um you know, it is unfortunate, but I feel like you guys also are the ones that um kinda do the PR of the courthouse, you know, they're the face of the courthouse and the county and um you know, and so uh we come to ask questions and you guys have been um you know, nice to have me, you know, come and it's been it's been a good experience um of you guys having, right? 'Cause I know it's maybe uncomfortable or you don't understand or you know, obviously you don't have a lot of uh participation from the citizens generally. So I realize and kinda diving into sunshine and public record requests and those kinds of things is maybe not normal, right? So I appreciate you um doing that thing. Um you know, but I still am here, kind of discerning what's um, you know, asking for the transparency. For the most part, I mean, I think I've been, you know, I come and I ask questions, you know? You a lot of times tell me to go talk to Brad Bailey, I did my due diligence, I talked to Brad Bailey, I get his responses and then, you know, I take the next step, right? So obviously you guys know that I've started videoing a couple week uh meetings ago. Took me a while, figured out how to get it on the internet, that's not a skill I readily have at my fingertips, um in the effort of transparency. I mean, I think Kenton, City of Kenton has done an amazing job. And I did ask if you guys were interested in videoing um your meetings and it was uh you guys are I'm assuming since you gave me the paper that you said no, you weren't interested. So I took it upon myself to provide that for the community. Um you know, but they have a great organization over there, the the videos, the meetings, their website is excellent and I really encourage you, especially with this IT upgrade, that um it would be really nice. I definitely have had issues, I mean, it's been hard, you know? I mean, it's probably been two months, you know? And I've spent lots of hours, lots of time talking to people all over trying to discern the government structure of our county, you know, who does what, you know, where the information is. I mean, even just finding the oath of office took me a while, right? To what, you know, who holds it, where is it, you know, um so it's it's disappointing because I realize that not any citizen can just come and spend hours and hours and hours learning their local government. Um when I I guess as a citizen, you expect that when you if I come to you, this would be my expectation, right? This is not what necessarily, not what I've not experienced, but maybe not what I was hoping for. Um is that we would be able to come, ask direct questions, get direct answers. Um and that if we had a question about how things work, you know, the information would be there and be readily. Now, is that your fault? I I don't think so, I mean, I'm not sure, I'm not sure who um you know, the the gentleman here was talking about um HR. And I thought that was really interesting because I I do think an HR or a um somebody that you could go and talk to, you know, that would know kind of the overall functions of the whole country. I mean, somebody, I mean, I think somebody needs to know, you know, like a operator when I call in and I ask if, you know, they know exactly where to click you. So from a citizen standpoint, I think that would be really helpful. Um as far as my endeavor to discern the facts and motives and um timing of the closing of Harden Hills, I mean, we're definitely coming down to the end, right? Where the time's getting further away, especially with the closing moved up, um essentially moved up. Uh it's getting closer and closer. So um I still I still don't understand the the you know, I asked you last week about keeping the facility open, how do we have any updates from ODH at this point? That's, you know, 'cause that's really, I mean, it's really what we're looking for. We, I mean, I want a nursing home in our home, so we're waiting diligently on ODH to feedback. And um was trying to do some research yesterday. Do you do you guys know if they do, if they approve these through a board? We were looking um through board meeting notes um from the Department of Health looking for like, you know, if we could find out where this information, um do you know if it has to go through a board meeting?
I have no idea how they operate.
Yeah, okay. Well, I mean, so that's, you know, a lot of research in trying to figure out, you know, where it is. But do we have any updates?
No, not this time.
Not this time. Um is there something, I mean, I feel like July first has always been a a significant date for Harden Hills. You know, I'm and I hear, I mean, there's um lots of swirling information all over the community as far as rumors and whatnot. If that's a significant day of why this needs to be closed on that day instead of the July tenth or further, like is there, I guess I'm, I guess, is there a legal reason why we can't extend the opening to secure these beds? Because other than a legal reason, I don't, again, I just can't quite grasp why we can't look along as it is. Especially when we, I mean.
We've 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 covered the process already, we did that last Thursday. We've covered how the Department of Health works, the timeline they have, and how we fit into that timeline. And that that's all we're operating on here.
Yeah, but if you're gonna shorten it by a week, I mean, that's a week of.
Where did this come from?
Well, I don't know, that's a rumor.
Well, perhaps you shouldn't believe rumors.
You're going on a rumor.
Well, I don't know.
July tenth is the date.
Well, July tenth, so.
July, it has been and it still is.
We cannot change that date.
That is the date.
Well, I do know that if the last resident leaves before then, that it is done. I mean, that's the only way the date, like I understand that the the date from ODH doesn't end, you know, it's that date. But if you don't have any residents, that is the effective date.
Correct.
Right, so that's why I guess the rumors.
We are not changing the date, though.
No, no, okay, okay.
You indicated to us that you that we were changing the date.
Well, they the.
And you is and you based it on what you're saying you heard.
Well, see, now that is the problem. Because if I come and ask questions and then I don't, I don't get what I feel is.
I think you just got the response.
And you got the response last Thursday.
And he did last Thursday. And he did last Thursday, too.
So the, so you're not at all interested in furthering Harden Hills so that we can save the beds?
You got the response last Thursday.
So can we talk about um. Why it's taken record requests and such to get, I feel like, a decent amount of information? Because a lot of the information that I've I've found is not because you guys have been forthright with your positions as elected officials. It's because I've done the digging to get the information. And I just, I think that's a concern, that that's, you know, especially when I know, uh you know, from the emails that Van Cress is asking you to stop the closing so that they can fix the fire pump. And they can keep the facility open and yet there was a no, no, you know, there was a no response. But I hear to you that you're not at all interested in fixing the fire pump, even if Van Cress is saying they're willing to do it.
I don't think we ever said that.
So maybe that's a problem.
Who here ever said it or can I hear us, that's remarkable.
Well, there was a no response in the email that I received.
No response is different than us saying we're not going to do something.
Are you interested in working with Van Cress to not close it so that they can fix the fire pump and manage the facility? So that we can have the building, a nursing home building in our facility or in our our county? Is that a legitimate consideration?
At this point, with the number of residents we have, no.
All you need is one or two. That's all you need, and you still have that.
And a lot of money.
You can't put a price on it, you're good.
Yes, yes, we can, that's our job, I told you that on Thursday.
And so what's it, so what are you saving? How much, how much are we gonna save? I mean, are we gonna save millions because you're, the bed sales, ten beds just this past month. Van Cress bought ten beds for a million dollars, ten beds, a million dollars. We have seventy eight beds.
Did that come directly from Van Cress or are you relying on rumors and what was on Facebook?
That's from the, no, that's from the ODH board meeting, board meeting that's that are posted online. Right, so that when they approve the transfer of beds and the purchase of beds, it's online. So I mean, like, listen, I'm trying, I'm trying to go off of as much factual information as I can. You know, where the factual information isn't, then you start saying, well, maybe, maybe there is this, maybe there is that. But until you have something that says, you know, this is the evidence, right? You're trying to explore, you know, where is, where's the motive? So if you, if as a response to that email to Van Cress saying they wanted to to do this and to not close it and move forward. If you guys have other information on um. That you guys responded differently than that, then then a no answer, I'm all for hearing what that explanation was. Cause I, I mean, I can only just go off of, you know, what I've I've been able to see, so. I mean, I think I think it was a great, a great thing.
Well.
And and if there's information that I don't know, I, and Lori, please, I've been here, I would love to know. What it is that is being such pressured, pressured on you guys to do this thing? Cause as a citizen, I just can't, I just can't fathom, I can't fathom, I can't wrap my head around it, I'm sorry, Tim.
Well, I guess I wanna ask a question. You you bring stuff to us, ask questions, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then you say it's rumors or they say, you never say where you got your information? I mean, who said, who said, who told you July first, who told you all this stuff? We never said it.
No, no.
So then you stand here and say it.
She's the first to talk it. Okay, well, let me retract then.
Tell us, tell us where your facts are.
I'm not a public official, so you can't do a public record request, but I haven't, I have been elected to your city's.
When did I ever ask you for a public record request? You're putting questions out there that we've never asked you.
It's okay, it's okay, it's okay.
You're insinuating stuff that we never said.
So. Yeah, well, no, I'm 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 not held under the same standards that you guys are held to. You guys took oaths of office, I have those, right, for whatever it's worth, you know? And you guys have as putting yourself on the ballot, as putting yourself as elected officials. You took the sunshine classes, you know the Open Meetings Acts, you know that you have a duty to the citizens of Harden County. Right, that's the position, right? So, you know, you're free to ask me questions, but I'm not under obligation to answer those questions because it's not, oh, yeah, I know, I know.
I never said you were.
And and.
Say that again, you did, you just insinuated something else that I never ask you.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So I'm just asking you to please.
And 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 it all was, Michelle, when you had asked various statements. And and in this response, it takes away from the integrity of what you're trying to get to.
It takes away my integrity?
The integrity of the question.
I would like a substantial answer to why Harden Hills, why. We're not more interested in saving bed licenses for Harden Hills. That's that's the crux of the question, why are we not doing everything possible?
Who's, can I ask who's we? Who is in this circle of we?
Me. We, the commu, I mean, I think as a community, I mean, I'm not saving a nursing home for myself, I'm saving it for our community. So maybe I shouldn't speak on beha- on behalf of our community, but I feel that not everybody can be here and I can. So so that's my concern, why, what I feel like you guys have have dropped the ball, fumbled the ball, as I clearly pointed out the very first time. Of really putting together a substantial effort to save these beds, that's the question. And I think that's what I've been looking for the whole time.
And we are putting forth an effort to save the beds. It may not be the effort that you want to see, but it's the effort that we are putting forth and trying to get accomplished in the timeline we have to work. So we are doing that, it's just we're not satisfying what you want to see us do.
And that has been mentioned before, too.
Okay, well, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll be back.
Appreciate you.
I mean, I think we did. So.
I appreciate your pins, thank you.
See, I have those and and hopefully it'll all work out at the end, but.
Thank you for the search.
I think we all owe him for that.
Yeah. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, no, we have to wait.
Lori?
Yeah.
Anything else for the day?
That's it, except Brad, you do have an airport meeting on the schedule tonight.
That's correct.
Okay, well, well, see everybody on Thursday.
Oh, yeah, I will be in the language of my life. I will be the language of my life.
Very good.
I will be again.
Yep. Um. Nope, guess that's it, see you Thursday.
Alright.
Yeah, I was just gonna look to see if I had a strap here for this. Come out the park, go inside. There's some slots out there right now, so he gets up in the. I'll be back in.
Okay. Let Deb know so she doesn't have to run you down, okay?
I've never met you before, he seemed very impressive, quiet, but very on the wall, yeah, no, just leave it.
You really know, so why are you scared?
Yeah, and really, you do guard area, no?
Hmm.
The buck, I hope he didn't, the buggy didn't scare him. I don't know, does it night or evening?
I'm surprised they're out at night.
Oh, there. No, mountains worse, but.
Yeah, no, I'm here, I do, you don't see them outright. Weather getting better, I'll have lights, plenty of landings, or.
I know you can't rest your tables, travel, but it sure does make you nervous.
Yeah, I'll see you in the vision.
Alright. Help me.